Any of those? All right, so no old business on the agenda today. But a couple of quick things, I just wanted to welcome Roseanne to the board as well as Sandy Cantor. It's their first time with us today, first time meeting them today.
Yeah.
Appreciate the cookies as well. I'll enjoy some of those after the meeting. And then just wanted to plug as well on behalf of Michelle. Michelle did send out to us last week a link for the Anandaga County Planning Symposium, which I believe was March 13th. So would highly recommend for you guys, if you have the ability to participate. I was there, yeah, I was there last year, so John, Kevin and I were there.
I was there.
You were there as well? So there was plenty of us that were there. It will fulfill any obligations that you have from a training standpoint for at least a year, I think for two years. So highly recommended and I know the village will reimburse the cost of that. I'm not sure if registration is open, but I know the next time we meet will be almost March, so I wanted to make sure and took an opportunity just to share that. And again, Michelle sent that to us through email last week. All right, so new business today related to Bolinsville Town Center. So we all received application for the site plan development last week related to this project. So this is the first time that we're hearing from the group today. So lots of questions, lots of information to share as we kind of start the outset of this process of learning what you guys are proposing. And I know that you guys had a few things that you wanted to share with us. So I'll turn the floor over to you guys who want to introduce yourself and then let us know what you guys are proposing.
So first I'm just going to distribute, I know you receive these by email, but these are depictions of the plan, so you can have them in front of you while we have our discussion. These are just paper copies of what was set around.
Yeah, my printer doesn't print plate that big.
Yeah, sometimes it's easier to read the small print if you got it blown up. So there we go. And then the other document I'm getting handing out, this is the district plan. So because we're doing a PDD, this essentially functions as the proposed zone. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Brody Smith, I'm an attorney of Von Chenning King and I represent the applicant. The representative developer here to my left is Charlie Brewer from HB Construction. Our engineer is Steve Breitska from EDR. And Steve will be speaking after me to answer your questions about some of those engineering questions, more technical questions. But let me begin with just where I use the location of this project. It's located just south of East Genesee Street, that's Route 31. It's bordered on the south, so it's just north of Route 370 Salina Street. It is between the Beville Supply and Curtis Road. Curtis Road is a street that has single-family residential homes on it and on the other side is bordered by the train tracks. The current zoning is mainly industrial. The bulk of the property, which is multiple parcels, is industrially zoned. There is some commercial on the extreme south end of the project area. And then there's just a little bit of R1 residential on the edge on Genesee Street as well. The proposed project would consist of seven buildings, apartment buildings. Each would be four stories. In total, there'd be 332 units. There are three pads that are being proposed for low-intensity retail and commercial use. In addition to that, an existing industrial building on the property is intended to be repurposed as a clubhouse. And then there would be parking associated with all these uses that I've outlined. The way that we're proposing to have this process emerge from a procedural point of view would be through a plan development district. We already went to the Village Board of Trustees prior to coming to you with the concept plan to get their reaction of this proposed PDD. What is a PDD? A PDD is a mechanism in your code which allows a floating zone to be landed anywhere in a zoning district in the village. So the PDD provides some broad criteria as to what it's to be used for and some sort of, some minimal thresholds. What are those thresholds? First threshold for a PDD, this is Article 11 of your code, that it be at least 10 acres. This is far more than 10 acres, just the three largest parcels are 13 acres, that's more than that. The coverage has to be less than 30%. This project's proposal, projected coverage is only 24%. Other than that, the PDD is something that is up to the discretion of the Village Board of Trustees to define any additional bulk requirements in terms of what the setbacks or height, or any of those things will be. As I had mentioned before, our initial conversation with the Village Board of Trustees resulted in referral to your board. There was on balance positive comments. A couple of things about the project change based on input we received from that board. One thing is there was initially vehicular ingress and egress from Curtis Road. The Village Board of Trustees said that would be their preference that that would only be available for pedestrian access. So you see that reflected on the plans in front of you, that adjustment was made. Other input that was received on the district plan was positive input concerning the consolidation of the curb cut from Genesee Street near Beville Supply. That would be a shared entrance for Beville Supply that would come and come off of that driveway and then you continue in to go to the apartments and you could take a left for that new commercial pad. So that would be an improvement in terms of ingress and egress instead of having semis and things like that going into Beville Supply from Genesee Street. If you don't come up this driveway, it would be an improvement. The only input we received as that plan's been shared with Beville Supply is they want to study it and make sure there's enough space for semis to make that turn. We're committed to make sure that that is as convenient as possible for them and that that is workable for all involved. In addition, the district plan that I provided, it mirrors, you've got a few of these that have been passed in the past, pardon your code. So we've mirrored the format that you've used for district plans in the past. This district plan first lists proposed uses. So you see there's multifamily dwellings, the apartments are listed there. And also retail and offices would be the likely uses of those commercial pads that you see depicted on the drawings. And so that's listed as uses as well. The highest building in the proposed development would be the apartment buildings of four stories. That's listed in the district plan. The district plan also requires 40-foot setbacks from 31 and 370. In the drawings, you see that we propose 386 parking places in a large area that would be set aside for stormwater detention in order to control the stormwater on the site to make sure that it doesn't cross properly. That is the broad strokes of the project. Let me stop here for questions before I turn it over to Steve to give you some additional information. Do you have any questions about what I've said so far?
I don't want to speak here, but I'd like to hear the remainder and then maybe you all have questions.
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Again, I'm Steve Breitska, I'm a landscape architect at EDR. Brody covered 90 or 95% of what we have in front of you now since we're at the conceptual level. We do appreciate you looking at this at this level. We know the site review plan process is much more detailed. As we go through our design process, we'll be getting into all of the engineering aspects of it, the layout and the overall design. But for the time being, we wanted to look at how we can start to lay out this program. As Brody mentioned, we're looking at seven residential buildings. Each of those has an associated garage building across the road from it. So the goal is to provide a walkable community. A layer that's missing from this is the landscape component. All of the walkways, we're looking at tree-lined streets, outdoor spaces, providing amenities for all of the residents. And limiting access, I know one of the comments that we've seen already is this can pose a cut-through potential from 31 to 370, which is certainly something we'll need to review. But the goal is to limit that as much as possible and make this a community between 31 and 370. The parking is lower, we're coming in right now at 1.2 spaces per unit. We're evaluating how that can be laid out across the site and avoid one large parking lot. They are distributed evenly, both with the garage spaces and then with surface parking in front of the units as well. Brody mentioned the pedestrian connection to Curtis Avenue. The future commercial development blocks, those, we haven't designed them, we haven't looked at potential uses there, they're spaces reserved for future development. Older versions you may have seen of this plan did show some uses there, but we're dusting the design off and starting fresh from the inside out. So I think once we start to sort out some of the finer details, we'll start to look at the perimeter. But the goal is really to focus on the interior and start to hear from you the challenges, opportunities that we should be looking at as we start to dial in the design and get into more detail. Are you happy to discuss any questions or concerns?
Oh, I do have a question.
Sure.
I do not see any pedestrian ingress or egress on East Genesee or Salina Street. That's really standing out to me.
On East Genesee, so we do show sidewalks. I know they're fine.
Okay, those are sidewalks.
Sidewalks here, those are sidewalks.
Oh, okay.
So all of the white lines like that are sidewalks or on the side. That's why we're trying to make those connections throughout. Now, you're correct.
I'm always concerned about walkability.
Sure, no, I understand, yep. But you're correct, we don't have them on Salina Street.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there should be there.
Yeah, so that's something that people should look at. There is one adjacent to the leasing office, I know it's there.
I have a question. Obviously, besides, I call it the old eggway store, obviously, no, I don't say anything. Housing, what's impacted besides, because I know when you build out, there's obviously housing, will housing go away? How would that be handled with residents living there? I mean, is there housing that's going to be impacted by this plan that has to go away? I know it's, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, on the Genesee side, there are a few overhouses that we have under contract.
You do?
For the most part, the vast majority of the site is vacant. But there are, I want to say three houses, Brody, three or four houses on the Genesee Street.
There's three houses on the Genesee Street side, I believe, and then the one house on Salina Street was taken down.
And then the only business is eggway, I call it eggway, but.
So that would remain, I know a lot of people talk about the co-op.
Yeah, the co-op, eggway, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to affect their business, no. The only impact to them is right now, I don't mean a crash, but there's a curb, there's a curb cut.
And that's where you're going to make the changes, yeah.
Yeah, because right now they have a curb cut there.
Right.
So we close that and then get all that off. It's going to help traffic a little bit.
Yeah, there would be like some grass area in between, because that's where like in the fall they put all their pumpkins.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think it's like this concrete's going to be great there. But it looks like there's a little bit of grass.
Yeah, we could definitely work that out.
Probably in line, like maybe put some, I know we didn't do the landscaping yet, but some landscaping to separate it because they do like put some retail stuff there.
They definitely do, yeah.
Yeah, there are property lands here, but if they're going over the property land, I'm sure we could work that out here.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going over, but just, you know, to make it look nicer for them.
Yeah, that's very good.
Because there's nothing there right now.
I totally agree with that comment, yeah, yeah.
And then just for me, for clarification for that same little section, the curb cut that currently exists for Beville Supply, that would be eliminated, right? And it would be a single curb cut, which is where it would be.
That's true, we're trying to make it safer, more efficient.
What type of apartments are these? Are they market apartments, are they affordable, like what, you know?
They'd be market. And there's a variety of different sizes in terms of bedrooms, it's a mix. There's some flexibility there as to what the mix is going to be, but they would be market, they wouldn't be rent-controlled.
Are they age restricted?
What's that?
Are they age restricted?
No.
Not age restricted.
So we could use some of that as senior housing, maybe?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I would expect a significant portion of the apartments to be utilized in that way. That's something that this group, you know, in terms of proposing projects and other communities, a lot of the impetus for this sort of thing is people who want to age in place, people want to stay in the village or the town where they've spent their lives but need to leave, you know, all that maintenance of a single-family home. So this is a great opportunity for people to do that.
Do you have any thoughts on how, you mentioned about the cut-through to limit that, just any thoughts how you would go about that? You know, stopping it being a cut-through, you know, not creating, I mean, we all know the first thing we think about is traffic, you know, obviously. That's the first thing you hear beside the traffic study. Like how would you, how would you handle that as a cut-through not being busy and, you know?
So there's a lot of potential tools there, you know, that can be incorporated in the final design. I think things like crosswalks, as you see there are, you know, there's parking lots here, there's the pedestrian here. So things like crosswalks are very easy and they slow traffic. Narrowing of the streets as you have parking on that street, it's not, it's not like Genesee Street, we've got just curves and shoulders, there's cars parked there, that's going to slow traffic. You know, if necessary, we can explore additional engineering controls like speed bumps or something like that. But I would think that the narrow nature of the street, the prevalence of parking on the street, angled parking or nosed in parking, crosswalks, things like that are going to slow traffic. It's not going to feel like, it's not going to feel like Genesee Street or a boulevard or something, I don't know.
Has a traffic study been done?
No.
We haven't done anything for 380, would you say it was, 386?
No, that's not, not done yet, but that's expected to be part of this process, yes.
Okay, yeah. I'm here probably the most conversation about the traffic. You're already here, you know, they're going about it now.
It's a busy area, you can't really turn left, either way there at certain times of the day.
Most people take a right to turn around and take a left.
Yeah. So we'd expect suggestions to come from that study and that, you know, I can't speculate as to what exactly those engineering controls will be, but I'll defer to the traffic experts on that. What I will say is sort of a 30,000-foot level is, right now it's zoned industrial. So this is a far less intensive use than an industrial use.
Is the whole thing zoned?
So if the village.
Excuse me, Brody, is the whole thing zoned industrial?
It's mostly zoned industrial, there's some commercial zoning on the south side here and then just a few of these houses are R1, this is cornered. The rest of it's all industrial. So the, this would be a far less intensive use from a density, from a traffic point of view, from all those things than if it were to be left to be developed as like a factory or something. Which, as we know, that maybe five years ago, that'd be, you know, ah, how likely is that? Well, pretty likely now. So this might be a good opportunity to take that off the board, these, you know, since there is, a lot of non-industrial uses around the property.
So have you done the SECA study yet or is that something that goes along with everything else?
So we're here just with the concept plan, but we're looking to get your feedback initially so we can incorporate your ideas into our formal site plan application. But as part of the site plan application, we would submit a long EAF and, you know, go through the normal SECA process with your, your council, the sub-thing.
Yeah, I know the stormwater piece will be a big concern specifically where this area is, so I know that's something that everyone will be paying close attention to. A couple of other things that at first jumped out to me when we first had this was the height of the buildings being four stories. I know previously when we have had conversations with other developers, we weren't, we were like hesitant about three stories. So four stories kind of has like allergic reaction, I think. Especially when you consider the existing properties surrounding that are, you know, single-story, you know, so this is going to feel like you have people eyeballing you from four stories up heading down. So I think that would be a big concern for me as well as for many others. And then sort of like related to that, and I think you touched on it a little bit in terms of the landscaping surrounding, I think that's what, I'd like to get a better sense for what you guys are thinking, for what would those landscape buffers or trees look like?
Right.
In terms of their density, their height, and then how that plays into, I guess, the property ground boundaries, how close is that going to look to those perceptions?
Yeah, we purposely held that off on that, on the Curtis Ave property line to provide a buffer there. And that can also function for stormwater as we get into that design in more detail. But we did, we were pushing it further to the west against the railroad side of the property. So that green buffer along the Curtis Ave side is always intended to function as a screen between the new development and the existing single-family.
Another thing that, just was kind of a question would be the location of the clubhouse, like really being pushed right up against that property line. I know that's something that would potentially be a high-traffic area, not just for vehicles but people. And I, we're showing a couple of surface parking lots directly adjacent to there. Is there consideration to maybe pushing that to more of a central location within the overall footprint of this development? So that rather than kind of attracting a group of people right to the property line, and I know the train tracks there, so it's not that there's a backyard right there, but it's very close.
The reason for the placement of that structure is it's an existing building. We're looking to repurpose an existing concrete, formerly industrial building.
On either side of the clubhouses, what, what am I looking at here?
Those are parking for the clubhouse. I think it's 24 spots, it's a total. Yeah, so there'd be 24 parking spaces in the sort of slots there. In terms of, besides just repurposing that existing building, I'll defer to Steve, but I think there's some advantage to having a stormwater detention at the center of the property, given its topography and to keep it away from neighboring landowners.
Yeah, that was, that was our initial thought as we've been looking at various iterations of this design. And we do distribute it around the site, we'll do that as well. But by bringing it to the center, we're hoping to make it an amenity if possible as well, not keep it all around the perimeter, but we do have the walking paths through the space to make it as much of a feature as we can.
It would be a unique green space, you know, in the center of the village. As you see, it's sidewalks that would surround that feature. And people could, you know, obviously have a pleasant place to, to walk from 31 to Genesee Street, from Curtis to the cut-through, it would be a nice green pedestrian way where people could get from A to B without being on the busier streets.
I'm curious as to where you're coming up with your parking count for these, for the apartments? Is it, they're one-bedroom apartments, so you only need one? You know, the concern is, as soon as there's two people in an apartment, whether it's one-bedroom or more, the likelihood of two cars and then what about, you know, people who are coming to visit? So there's some, some concern about the density as far as number of apartments and the parking that is, appears to be what you're, what you're trying to do here. I think we have to look at also what, we should look at the Phoebes, you know, we did that, how many units and how much parking ended up being over there. And there actually is some opportunity over there for some street parking. It's not, not ideal, nobody wants that, but there's street parking over, near the Phoebes property and there really isn't any opportunity for that here.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, practically, if you don't have enough spaces here, where will people park?
Right, right.
Curtis, because there's a pedestrian connection, you know, so that would maybe be where everybody ends up choosing to park if they can't fit in this area here, because you're not going to be able to park on 31 or really 370.
Yeah, we can study and provide additional information as to, you know, what we believe the parking requirements for these, this mix of units will be. I don't want to react to.
Oh, right, no, just.
But we can provide some additional data on that.
You said 1.2 spaces per unit?
Yeah, there's a total of 332 units, 386 spaces.
I mean, yeah, if you have a couple, I mean, most likely each person's going to have a car because you'd have to have a car to get around, around here. I mean, I know there is public transportation, but I don't think it's widely used, especially in Bolinsville. So I would bet you like 90% of, if you have a couple living in an apartment, they're going to have two cars.
Yeah.
That's just, I mean, my husband and I have two cars. We couldn't do it with one car, like it's just not possible. So I think most people are in that situation.
Yeah.
So it doesn't put the garage in?
I don't think I can read that.
112 parking spaces. So is the garage space as part of the rent for a particular unit or is that rented additionally?
Yeah, so there's options. There is uncovered parking and covered parking.
Covered, you pay an extra for.
Right.
As part of whatever unit you have.
Yeah.
So they don't get rented, bought or rented or used?
True.
The parking spaces then?
It's intended for tenants, it's not.
No, but they say they don't pay for the parking in the garage. Does that 112 not get used?
Right.
I see what you're saying. You're right, if no one rented one of the garage spaces, then that would be a 112.
So you'd be short of 112 spaces.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
But people will, I mean, I think.
Well, I mean, if it's market, right?
Yeah.
I guess if nobody wanted, then you'd see the market would push the price down.
Get it rented. You probably get it rented, try to do the math.
The number of parking spaces for the clubhouse, what's intended there, like a rental, maybe facility and?
So the leasing office would actually be over here.
Okay.
So the clubhouse is meant for like common meeting space amenities for the tenants.
Fitness room. Fitness.
Is that a one-story building that's, that's there?
Currently, yes. We can look at different options of moving it around since we're trying to utilize something that was already there.
It's just a discussion, you know, I don't, I'm not saying it's bad, I mean, that's for the, this board to kind of determine.
I think one of the other things to consider in kind of looking at this, is that area with the leasing offices, as you guys know that that's already zoned commercial, I believe.
It is, yeah.
When you shift over to the 31 area, you get to Beville Supply, you pass Beville Supply, it's all residential, you know. Contrary, coming in the village, it's all residential until you hit Beville Supply. But now we're kind of thinking about, you know, I guess that's again for us to determine how we feel about that, but we're not pushing the commercial space further back up the block, almost all the way to Curtis. And there's currently, how many lots are there currently, is it like three or four? That will that would potentially become commercial. Is that like three lots that are there or four lots?
There are three houses.
It looks like three.
Three houses.
Maybe, maybe four? Three? I think there's four, actually.
You're right. So the ones that were that are kind of thrown out there in black, they're not there anymore.
Those probably have been demolished.
And they're currently owned by the current owner. And then the two to the, was that to the east?
Yes.
So it's right now, the Pluff House is currently occupied by the owner.
The Pluff House does exist?
Does exist, and that's not under control right now. That's not part of the development. So we're in discussions with them.
So there are some houses that are not under contract?
There's one, correct.
There's one, and we're still working on it.
What about the business weight load? Is that under contract? Is that or is that not going to be involved? You know, the weight load, it's the old dairy on 370. Is that separate? Won't be affected? Do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
Is that not affected? It's not part of it?
So everything here is owned by the current owner that we have under contract?
Gotcha.
Except the Prince House?
Okay.
So that's another one we're in discussions with them too.
Is it going towards the Curtis Ave? Is that what you're talking about?
No, some of it's.
On the other side?
So then up on the 370 side, through the what would be if you're facing that proposed two access, two way access drive to the right of that, that's currently residential. Is that currently, are there currently homes there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's a couple more that would go there.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I was just trying to get a sense of it, I was stopped in where this started. Yeah.
Are the internal roads going to be private? If the drives are private?
I haven't made that determination yet.
Talk about it.
We're open. Our assumption is the village would want that dedicated.
No.
No?
Okay.
That gives us more flexibility in how we design them then.
If they're private?
Yeah, especially with the with the parking and it's surrounded. I mean, you wouldn't you wouldn't mean any setbacks and it would just be a it could be really complicated. Well, I mean, we're not subject to the setbacks because of PDD, but I understand what you're saying.
The commercial space on 31, I mean, how big is that plan to be? I can't tell from, you know, the drawings is like, is that a huge building? It looks big, like.
So that's meant to depict almost like a zoning map that that area would be commercial. It's not meant to depict a building footprint.
Yeah, because like we were saying, that would be the first commercial building like on your way into town. So we would want to make it look kind of, you know, one in with the town aesthetic because that was our whole thing with the Dollar General that was looking to come in that they, you know, it's just a very harsh, you know, transition from the nice houses to that. And so we wouldn't want that, especially because that's when you're coming right into our town or our village, so.
That's a great point. So one thing, any additions, you know, if the PDD were to be approved with, you know, these pads included, any future development would still have to come back to you for site plan approval and would still be subject to Architectural Board review. So it wouldn't be like a.
I'm just wondering if if it needs to be more specific than that upfront. So there isn't, have to figure out how to how to make that like an absolute that it has to come in, it has to be compatible. Maybe it's a size thing too, like you can only have so many square feet on that pad? That might be something we would think about.
We could include bulk requirements in the district plan. We prefer not to commit to a footprint since we don't know where to do yet. But but yeah, that would make sense if you want to do bulk requirements for like a building envelope. We actually already have some of that in the district plan on those lots. There's right now in our proposal, there's a 40 foot setback from the road. So 40 foot from here, 40 foot from here. If you want to impose additional bulk requirements like side or setbacks or something, certainly something we could incorporate.
And or.
Like over here, because there's houses if you want to do something here.
Stories, you know, building size, maybe some other other requirements on that.
Right now, it's a four story height requirement for the whole thing. If you wanted to have a shorter height requirement for that, that'd be fine. We could write that into the district plan for the commercials.
I do think that the four story is a threshold issue here, right? So I don't know, like if if they don't can't do four stories, does the developer say this is not a worthwhile project for me? He I haven't heard that, but I'm just saying that that's that's a consideration and do we care? And how does this look? How's it going to look, right? And how's it going to look from this person's house and from the road? And I would recommend that we have, that once the elevations are drawn, that we get some view.
Yes, rendering 3D graphics or something.
Points, but also the views, like if you're standing here, it looks like this. If it's over here, it looks like that, et cetera.
I mean, it might not necessarily be a problem.
Don't know. I have, yeah, I'm not expressing an opinion on it. I do know that four stories is not something that the village has been keen on, but that's not to say in this area it might not be warranted. But I do think it's a view shed issue. And I think that that would be a request of your team.
What is the impact, you know, just jumping, this is a broad comment just for conversation, but to the village? I mean, let's think of Chuck. I mean, what, you know, what are we putting forth to the village? So you'll hear it from the taxpayers now. I mean, how will that affect us? Let's not, I'm not trying to paint any negativity, but will there be any negative impact? Are we going to overwhelm the water? I'm just trying to understand. I know that's a broad statement, but I just thought.
And I'm not sure, because I sent our memo out earlier today, so I'm not sure you guys.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
We do have to look at sewer and water.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We are concerned about the circulation of the site. Specifically, the parking that backs up into the road.
Gotcha.
And these are, there's a significant amount of vehicles and, you know, it could be significant enough traffic that that can be an issue. So we typically don't like that, even in smaller scenarios, but this has got quite a bit.
Yeah.
So roadway network, we're not thrilled as far as the ability to use a shortcut between Genesee and 31. Board should consider if there's enough parking, we were concerned about that. We thought this was senior housing. If it is your standard apartment residential, it should be based on industry standards, whether it's the Village Code, what we would typically require, or Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines, those are all just, you know, we can kind of at least use those as a basis for something that, you know? And then if you want to say that's not enough or that's more than enough because of the situation of being in the village or mix of units, that's kind of planning board can kind of assess that on their own. Parking in that main alley is a scourge, especially with something like this where it's really, you know, no matter how narrow you make it, there's always somebody late for, you know, school or something. Due to, well, due to nature of use, we thought the number of ADA spaces should be a little higher. That's because we thought this was going to be a senior development. There, as far as seeker, which is what I think you're leading to, is like, what are the impacts? That's going to be a drawn out kind of, you know, 13, 14 detailed pages of questions, which could also lead to the possibility that we may want to go to what's called a draft environmental impact statement if we decide that there's some impacts that are large enough that it needs further study. If there's only a couple of them, you may go handle them with separate studies like traffic, you know, other environmental impacts that, you know, the the board may feel need more study. You could just kind of ask for those separate and not go through the more elaborate draft environmental impact statement procedure. Mapper did come up with a couple of additional things to worry about at the ECU radiation site within a couple thousand feet. Could be on the site, could be 2,000 feet away, which is, you know, close to half a mile. So that just needs to be kind of weeded out. There's a couple of sites that are listed on there, so they will have to look at that. Potential federal wetlands are on the site along the creek there. Potential for principal or primary aquifer, I've got to look into that. I don't think our aquifer goes this far, but I have to look into that. Endangered species pops up all the time and specific, it's called eagles. So that needs to be assessed just to see if there's any habitats on site that are potentially of concern. Possible archaeological site on the site, that just needs to be further evaluated by their consultant in conjunction with the state to see if there's anything there. May not be anything. We've done a lot of these, there's, you find absolutely nothing. We'd like a sign survey for the site that shows all the pertinent information, such as easements and that sort of thing. If we move along, it'll help us determine if there's anything that's in the way or anything that's in the encumbrance that'll interfere with the site happening. New York State DOT will need to be consulted for two driveway entrances there on DOT, New York State DOT roads. And in addition to that, we'd like to be, or the village should be part of all those conversations so that we don't get some kind of a letter saying everything's okay without having been consulted as a village because ultimately it is our, you know, our village to deal with.
By village, we mainly mean our engineer. You all are not, you have to go to the New York State DOT meetings.
And there's other projects that are in the works, those may need to be taken into account in conjunction with this here. They, you know, there's a, if those, if they're kind of in the background, so if they do decide to go forward or anything like that, may need to be kind of studied together as their impacts will be multiplied. Stormwater, got that large drainage channel. There's some offsite studies that may need to be done to ensure that that everything's taken care of. Typical procedure for them, they're over major disturbance, so it's going to require full SWIP. Many sewage pump station, whether that becomes private or public, because something that can be discussed. And then needs to be, like I said, needs to be assessed water and sanitary service if there's any offsite improvements that may need to be made. Those are the.
Perfect. Thank you for answering my question.
Well, you guys are bringing them up.
Great.
Did they have this?
I don't think they got it. Michelle's.
No, I, we got it out late, late this morning, so.
That's great.
So that whole process, you know, most like plan reprocess, something we anticipated and we have every intention to do. Our purpose here to bring you the concept plan before we bring you the, you know, full site plan is to get your input before we give you that so that, you know, our plan can reflect your input. So that's what we're hoping for. If, you know, if if the reaction from the board is this is dead on arrival, we don't think it's a great idea, we want to know that. We don't want to do all that. And it's only to find out if this is going to happen. So we're really looking for your input and your direction as to how we proceed.
Well, I think you've heard a few, a few things. I think enough maybe to go on. You know, what are what are the sticking points that we've heard? We'd like to see some some solving of this, you know, this through through area. That seems to be a concern, the stories, the elevations, to see those, I think, is is critical at this point. And of course, not all the details of Greg's comments, but, you know, the ones that 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 can be, that can be looked at right away to alleviate some of the concerns. But my question to the board and what he's saying is that the town board has sent this to us, they're like, hmm, yeah, maybe, looks good. Devils in the details come to the planning board. So as an initial comment to this applicant, is, are there any deal breakers in here? Or should we say, hey, you heard what what we said, I'm sure they're taking notes and carry on and we'll see you next month? That's the question.
I mean, my first response, it's nice to do something with this property that's been sitting, but how that all comes together, a lot of details, oh, you know, because I think it's a nice opportunity to do that. It's just, you're not going to use it otherwise, I'm guessing, but that's a reach. That's the first thing I'm like, oh, this is interesting, you know? It would be my first response, but so many questions and details still.
And for housing, which ordinarily would not go in an industrial, it's only possible with the PDD.
Right.
But there certainly is.
Yeah.
It's an interesting site because there is the commercial over here and then, you know, it might not be nice to have residential there versus whatever else might go there.
Right, right.
Not that there's any big industrial factories coming to be though.
Right. So if not this way, so it's definitely, I think, my interest, I've never thought about.
I don't think it reminds any of, there's nothing that's a deal breaker, but I want to see a lot more details, which of course would be your next step. Like, I don't see any of the lighting or like the trash or, you know, anything. Obviously, that would be in the future plans, but we would need all that too, of course.
I think the only thing that, and I'm sure probably everybody's going to agree here, is the the traffic.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of congestion from that point on 31 that goes down to that light. There's a lot of businesses there, there's a lot of congestion right there. So how can we maybe make that an in only on that and not an out? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there because you have a little bit more room over on 30, 370 to get in and out, but I don't know. I know a lot of people in the village always complain about the traffic.
So many people literally take a right to turn around. It happens all the time and that's okay, but you'll hear about it, you know? It's an increased.
I have sort of a different viewpoint on that. You know, I mean, I came here from New England. I grew up here, went to high school here, and then I lived in Massachusetts for 33 years. And, you know, the traffic problems here are.
Nothing compared to.
I'm just saying the congestion, the congestion of people turning in and out of all of those businesses that are there. That's really what it is about. It's not really anything other than that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you wait two minutes for a light or three minutes.
I mean, we're going to be experiencing growth here in the next 20, 30 years.
They're not going to go with someone else.
Traffic.
Yeah.
Better get used to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm in agreement with the rest of the group. I don't think there's anything here that we would say is a deal breaker, but I do think the few things that we highlighted is concerns for us could be deal breakers, you know, in terms of the height of the buildings, how does that look? You know, we think we know how it looks, but maybe it looks different, but a better understanding there. The thorough fair aspect of that, I think, is definitely a huge concern. You know, not just for the traffic piece, but, you know, you've got sidewalks that are bisecting through there, so, you know, there's the chance cars could hit, but we don't want people to be hit. Certainly, those are things to be considered.
Which street is the better one to take a left turn on?
Definitely do something.
Stay somewhere.
Any other thoughts? Jamie, Greg, any other thoughts or?
Jamie, Greg, any other thoughts, or anything you need to do to conclude today?
Yeah, you don't, you don't want the lawyer doing site plans, but, no.
You're going to start doing legal stuff, you're going to start doing site plans.
You know, maybe an option of really bifurcating the site, so that only half the site can come in from that road, and half the site can come in from the other road, and you literally can't cross over. Freeze. I don't know if that works, that's the only thing, you know, that's just wacky, you know? Lawyer doing site plans. Greg, do you think that's wacky?
There's problems with the fire department, and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But anything that can discourage that, you know, that temptation.
They won't actually feed us.
There's a variety of things you can do. I'm not, I mean, there used to be a time when there was a policy speed bumps, I think they have their place, you know? I, you know, and maybe it's something that's just more of a serpentine type route through there, I don't know. I mean, they're, you know, they're going to, they're going to try to figure out what works for them, and, you know, works to do some of that.
We'll definitely come back with some proposals on how to slow traffic through there. I think, and I'm not an engineer, but I think, Greg, Greg, we do need to have two ways for fire trucks to, I think, number one. Okay. Well, I appreciate the time you guys took to present this today, and to answer our questions and listen to our feedback. Look forward to seeing what you guys might have to do with us next time we see you.
The police will come in.
So, we're going to carry on? Yeah, so, so I guess that the, you know, the parting, the parting notes are that this board has just sent them off, there's a lot more work to do, and then what's going to happen is we're going to get a whole site plan together. The one thing that didn't come up was, again, the architecture hasn't come in yet, but when the architecture comes in, rather than sending it separately to A R B, I would suggest that the A R B members come here and talk about everyone's, you know, concerns about architecture, especially if you decide four stories is okay, so that it becomes integral to this P D D development, and it doesn't hike out there separately, and they have their little meeting, yuck, 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 something comes bad, right? So, that would be one of my suggestions. And then, ultimately, this document, so this is what it looks like, but it has to be in words, because it's a zone change in words, and that's the document that Brody gave you first. So, that needs to be very specific, and that's where we start. This is very, it's very simple, it can be much more detailed than this. For example, we're saying you can have multiple family dwellings, but maybe you want to say, "Well, you can only have X number". You can say that in this document, right? It behooves, and I don't mean to speak when they're not in here, because we're continuing this discussion, but it can be much more specific than that. "Well, you can only have X stories, you can only have so many units", right? All of that will be in here. They have to be set back from these property lines X amount. That can all be in here. They talk about retail stores, shops, banks, business offices, personal service establishments.
There's no details with that, that makes me look...
Well, I mean, they're...
Open, yeah.
They're early right now.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, that's, it's kind of like, this is, you know, this is a really, really rough painting.
Yeah.
You know, it's up to, you know, everybody to work together to see if we can get this thing to look like something everybody's going to be proud of. The extent of the detail is something that I'm curious as to what those boards anticipating before they vote on it. Is it full-blown construction documents, like I think Folsom was?
They're going to be pretty detailed before they're going, so that it's baked into this legislation, pretty detailed, before it goes, you know, to the town board. It's like the second to last thing that happens.
Will the board look, and this is new to me, this is what I do for a living, but this is new to me, so I'm going to ask, probably...
What do you do for a living?
I actually work for an engineering firm, I'm a facility man, I've been there for 18 years, building offices, moving offices, so I kind of...
Great, good, thank you.
So, I'm probably asking a lot of questions, and I'm sorry, but at first meeting, you'll be like, "Oh, she'll never come again". But I also, will the board, because I do go to some of the board meetings too, so I like to sit in and see what's going on, will they also expect to understand from, and I'm not saying this is about money, but what this will bring financial impact, and is going to bring more costs. So, if this is tied to Micron, because that's very much, my whole company's all tied to Micron holding in, right? So, if they're expecting this housing to move because of Micron, if they're benefiting, will the board ask us what Beadle's getting from this, or the board, is it okay to ask that question?
No. That's not the concern of this board.
Right.
The village board can ask some questions about it.
Yeah.
And even that's a little iffy, you know, as to...
I like what their budget is, I was just trying to understand, that won't...
Well, it may come down to, you know, I don't know if they're going to have any kind of pilots or anything.
Pilots, yeah.
Brake, tax breaks like that.
Yeah.
You know, you heard about, you know, this is going to be a public or private road, and I kind of stepped in, and I can't imagine you want to own this road as a, as a, I mean, it's not even conforming, you could never conform right. You know, so those are the impacts that I think the village board would want to see limited.
Okay.
If this development needs a million dollars in infrastructure installed to make it happen.
Yeah.
The board, the village is probably not going to be eager to, you know, put that at the table, I mean, you know? So, those are kind of eventual decisions that the village board is going to make.
That helps me, I just was trying to figure out who does what.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and we'll probably get, you know, if it starts getting into stuff like that, it'll probably, you know, there'll be probably discussions even before you guys have to vote on it, I would imagine. Because one of the things, in fairness to everybody, the village and the developers, you don't want to spend enormous amount of time trying, you know, get to that kind of detail for, you know, at the midnight hour for it to not happen. You know, it's a lot of energy and time on the village, everybody's village, I mean, this board, everybody's on the other board's part. It's also, it's going to be a lot of money expended on their part to get to that detail. It's not, it's not a small endeavor. So, I think in fairness, I would like to see this thing kind of go, I don't know if they want to try to jump in in a couple, three months, or if they're, you know, okay with, you know, taking it in step, so we're not putting the cart in front of horse.
I like that a lot, yeah.
Having to go backwards. It's a tricky little site, to be honest with you, it's a, it could be a really nice site, it's got some, you know, it's got a creek in it, it's got great changes, it's got, it's got things that have to be worked out.
Well...
And they're at the very early stages right now. This is, you know, we, you know, you put these plans together, you try to, you know, pop in this stuff and make sure you've got enough space for whatever you want to do, and then it starts getting massaged and moved around to where everybody kind of, you know, hopefully comes to...
It brings to mind the amount of time we spent on 19 Phillips Street and that.
Right, you know, and this is interesting, there's not, not many plots of land in the village like this.
Right.
Why isn't it developed? Because it's got, it's got a lot of warts on it, right? It's a difficult site, and it's owned industrial.
Are there any...
I don't think they really know that. That was your old foundry.
Well, two D E C, two D E C environmental sites popped up when I did the mapper, and mapper is a G I S program with the near state D E C, so I think two sites popped up. Where they are, I don't know, but I know what them gives the information on, as opposed to, you know, us spending enormous amount of time searching it. Like I said, it says within 2,000 feet, so it could be right here, you know, or it could be a floodwiser or something like that.
Yes.
So, you know, until those are kind of, you know, the trees shaking, and the food falls out, we find out what's there, or what is there, they kind of need to go and look at that.
Well, so, anything there before?
Chardines?
Yeah.
That was a long time ago.
When I hear foundry, I hear...
A foundry?
Chardines.
So, I know that Terry was able to draw up the presentation from 10 years ago, almost a day, this kind of came forth again. Does anyone know why that never materialized ever?
That's a great question.
Because that's a good question, like, why is there nothing there, and there was a presentation, so there must have been a reason.
I think there was, it wasn't as thought out as this is beginning to be, it's a different developer. And I don't, going to disclaimer this, because I want to sound like a commercial, but the Hubert Brewer Group, in at least two other towns I'm in, is engaged in significant projects that involve P D D. They're very responsive, they're very receptive to, you know, the communities that they're in, and they are investing substantially in this county, all over the county. So, I think that, you know, the right developer maybe has come to this, to the table here, and, you know, you've got a great, great engineering firm who understands these projects and sees them in a lot of different towns. So, I think that, you know, we can come to something that I hope, you know, that everybody is agreeable to. It's a lot of details. I agree with Greg that if, that I would be surprised if we skip a meeting at all this year with this project pending. It's got to keep moving, we only meet, meet once a month, and it's a lot of procedures, so it's engineering details and procedure, a lot of procedure. Seeker, go back to the town board, get the P D D, come back here, approve it. It's, you know, it's a month-long project and a big investment monetarily for the developer. I don't think there were any deal breakers here tonight, I don't think they're going to run away and go like, "Oh, that went terrible". And I'm not saying roll over on anything, but, I don't know, Greg, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that they're a very capable developer, so, I mean, you know, the ability to do something like this, you know, I mean, I know a lot of developers, if they walked in with this plan, I'd be like, "Okay, we're just thin wheels here", but they are capable, I mean, so whether, whether it makes financial sense for them, or whether it makes, it falls in what their vision is, we'll have to see. I mean, that could always be, you know, the, you know...
Struggle to break the camel's back, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, they are, they are, they do have the capability to do it, so it's not a, that's not an issue.
I would suggest that you go out and look at the El Barichi project to see how tall it is and what it all looks like, that's going to be a good, you know, how it fits into the village, it's in a different location, but not that, that far off. So, drive by, you know, off woods and off that area.
Is that the one in Timber Banks?
No.
No, it's a long, it's a long...
Sunning River.
Yeah, it's long Sunning River.
Lottery.
Oh, yeah, yeah. One, not lottery. Are those four stories?
No, I...
I think it's three.
I'm just saying, give you a...
Sort of heights pretty decent, I mean, that's one way you can look at this here, maybe you don't do a peak roof, you know, but that look, you know, is something that people are okay with, I'll bring the height down. Maybe the height doesn't matter, I've got to look at, you know, I might want to look at just the topography around the whole site, too. It's got some pretty good topography on the site.
Well, which is why we're saying, hey, give us some little, give us some views, let us see what we've got, and...
Always a good idea, walk the site in good weather.
Yeah, yeah. We have a hard time getting through that site.
Well, two meetings from now, it'll be daylight, so, right? So, you know, and that's, that's the thing, it's going to help us, and we will for sure be here on this project, so.